Okay, all right.
Yeah, decking, not anything else.
Right, correct.
Nancy, did you have to add?
Yeah, I was going to agree that it seemed like it was decking and things that mostly come here. So, as it relates, I would not like for us to eliminate the setback, but I think to come up with a compromise of something so that they didn't have to be coming to here all the time, as is done. And it's obvious to us that it's going to be non-standard, always.
And maybe, I mean, I don't know that this is an idea, might not be a good one, but it is an idea. Just in this situation, charging them the hard cost for the advertising instead of, you know, the 750, because if they all, if we don't do anything and they all have to come, I mean, that's kind of a financial, you know, people are going to, when they go look at those units, they're going to have to, they might not know, and then they're going to have to find out, like these people, that, okay, well, now I've got to go deal with the city and pay $750 and go through the rigmarole. So, I mean, I would like to see it not be a financial burden if we require them to come because of the setback on the deck.
We will meet with them and come back with you with some ideas.
Okay.
You agree, Paul?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along. Looks like we're going to have a long meeting.
Yeah, next is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only.
We haven't had citizens' comments yet. Is there any citizens' comments on this GA 1015? All right, seeing none, go ahead.
An ordinance of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 17, Public Utilities, to reflect modifications to the water and wastewater rate structures and monthly charges in fiscal year 2016, adding future rate increases for fiscal years 2017 and 2018, decreasing water system capacity fees and increasing wastewater system capacity fees, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Questions, comments?
No public comments?
This is the second reading.
I know, but where are the people?
Move approval, GA 1015.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, GA 1015. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Thank you. All right, we now move into our consent agenda, and we do have citizen comments on any of the items on the consent agenda, whether it was our minutes, attorney invoices, appropriation of funds as carryover for IT storage project, a number of resolutions regarding to chinup and their applications for grants, our police department's honor guard uniform initiative, and also approving the developers agreement between the city of Punta Gorda and Punta Gorda Acquisition to LLC. Anyone wishing to speak on any of those items? Does anyone wish to pull any items?
Move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right, we have citizen comments on our regular agenda items, and this includes our department performance objectives, our drainage assessment update, bicycle-friendly communities plan, the update on the city's business development plan action items, our fire, police, and general employee pension plan update, our happening-on-the-harbor marketing logo, our staff evaluations, and the walkable urban communities project. Anyone wishing to speak on any of these items? If not, let's jump in. Our fiscal year 2016 department performance objectives. Howard.
Each year, after we adopt the budget and the strategic plan, we take that information and we put together major objectives for all of the city's departments and the divisions within the city manager's office. They are in front of you. We've had one suggested change under city clerk. If you want to add, because we're already doing it.
Right, I think the one item was that we had recommended that we put together a brochure with regards to vacation rentals. Well, actually, it would be for any home businesses, but including vacation rentals. So, that was not incorporated. So, I think it'd be a good idea to include that. Are there any other additions, subtractions from the objectives? Yes, Nancy?
I have an overall comment, and I had a discussion with Howard about this. My view of these objectives is that they almost look like job descriptions. And in my corporate world training, objectives should be smart objectives. They should be specific, measurable, actionable, relevant, and timely, time-bound. And any of these could be turned into a smart objective, but these, and then I read these and I see these as deemed appropriate, as appropriate, where appropriate, as appropriate, as deemed appropriate, and where necessary, when the opportunity arises. I mean, really, it's like, that's just an out. I mean, it's not an objective if you're going to put these, you know, kind of what we would call weasel words in there.
I think as, I appreciate what you're saying, and I think these as performance objectives then would have action items attached to them.
Well, I think these should be turned into action. I think these should be turned into those. I mean, my recommendation would be that we should say, this is a good start, and let's ask our city manager to take this back to all the, and come back at a future council meeting with these as smart objectives and things that where we're really asking them to, we're saying, we're going to achieve something, we're going to strive for something. And even if we don't achieve it, at least we've tried. And I know in my experience, if we try to achieve something, we might not have gotten all the way, but gosh, we got more than what we thought we could do. So, it's my view.
Other comments? Yes.
I'm okay with it, because that's when the evaluation, like Howard's evaluation, are tied to these, and that's where that comes into play, and you can score him on whether or not you think he did a good job, you know, obtaining that objective. The words don't bother me.
Tom?
I'm comfortable with the way that it is. I think that a lot of this translates to the strategic plan that we have, and it's covered pretty much in there, and there are measurable components in that that we do measure. I do have a question, however, in Public Works, where we talk about, if I could, we talk about continue working with Florida Department of Environmental Protection to de-list Punta Gorda Isles' canals from impaired waters list. Can I have an explanation of that?
Mark Garing, Public Works. About four or five years ago, DEP and other agencies in the state came up with a plan where they showed certain reaches of the Peace River to have different kinds of pollutants or nutrient loads that were beyond recommended levels, and they were going to start mandating what each community needed to do to get their waterway back within check. We immediately saw that the two bodies of water, the two canals that they tested in Punta Gorda Isles, were way out of normal of what we were seeing in the others, and felt like it could very well have been somebody fertilized just a couple of days before that particular sample was taken. Well, the DEP has not yet instituted anything. It's been going back and forth because it is so controversial, it could be such a cost to it. They do not yet have a plan as what they're going to do to require us to bring our water bodies into compliance, nor do they have a plan of how you can get your water body out of compliant, out of, off the list. So, we have been sampling, working with checks, getting water samples of our canals, and just waiting to see what they come down with at the state level.
So, am I hearing there's no way to measure this objective?
Measure the objective? Well, there certainly is ways to measure the water quality that they found that we were in violation of on the two canals. There's a way to measure that.
But no criteria from them?
Right. They did one sample one time, and that's not a good statistical method for testing water. So, we've done samples monthly, maybe quarterly.
What are the outcomes of those, what are the outcomes of those monthly samples?
Everything is fine.
Okay.
But DEP does not yet have a method for us to make an application to them to get our names off that list.
I see what you're saying. Rachel, did you have a comment?
Yeah, so you're trying to work with DEP to get them to say, we're not on the list anymore. Here's our data.
That's our objective, yes. They do not yet have a way for us to make that application. So, we're just kind of in a holding pattern until DEP gets their ducks in a row.
But they haven't really told us to do anything either?
No, they haven't. They haven't told anybody in the state to do anything. They're still working on rules and ways to accomplish this, because it's considered an unfunded mandate. The cost to us is great, but some communities is really astronomical what they could require them to do.
Kim?
No, I'm okay. Move approval.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the fiscal year 2016 department performance objectives. All in favor?
The addition.
With the amendment, yes, with the addition. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One of the things I think that Tom, just as a follow-up on that, that Tom mentioned is that the action items are included in our strategic plan, and somehow they might be able to be incorporated, but I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, I object simply because I think they need to be reworked.
Thank you. Drainage assessment update. A fun program.
Good morning.
I'll give you 10 minutes.
Morning, Mark Garing, Public Works. Something very near and dear to my heart, drainage here in the city. As you're probably well aware, and a lot of the complaints come through you all, so you're very well aware of what the residents think of their drainage.
Indeed, I am.
And so, seeing that we weren't making much headway, not really getting ahead of the problem, we started a new program this year that allows us to use some new technology to assess the problem and try to get a better handle on it. The complaints that we get, there's water in my driveway, there's water in my swale, the sod is dead, water in the road, a whole host of those. When a complaint comes in, we never have a really a timeline to it to know. They'll send photos, they probably, they could have ran right out the door as soon as the rain stopped and took a photo. So, by using this video assessment that we came up with, we were able to get a good picture, a snapshot of the whole city on one day. The good reasons we want, the reasons we want to keep water in the swales for a certain period of time, so it can soak into the ground and be filtered of its nutrients before we dump it out to the harbor. The bad things, you leave it there too long, the sod dies, and you develop mosquitoes in the ditches and the swales. Our solutions for fixing the problem, if it's nothing more than a blocked pipe, takes a crew about a half hour, they go out there, pop the pipe open, dig a shovel full of soil out in front of the pipe, and the water starts flowing. The more involved properties could involve three or four or five lots of thatched fluoridate that we have to cut through, and it's roughly about $1,500 per lot to cut through that. We talked a few months ago about developing a program where we'd look at de-thatching. Well, we've talked to some landscapers, and that really isn't an option for us. Anytime the sod has built up to a level where it's blocking drainage, it's too late for de-thatching. They recommend that if we had a good, consistent de-thatching program for swales that are in good shape, they wouldn't get to bad shape, but we're not going to solve our problem. The sod has to be taken up anywhere where we have the problem that it's blocking drainage. Our current workload, right now, we're getting about 50 repairs per year in. Some of them, like I said, could be an hour, some of them could be three, four days. The same crews that do these repairs are also the guys that set up for events, build things at the parks, whatever, so it's not a crew that's dedicated to drainage 100% of the time. The video inspection that we employed is saving us quite a bit of time. Generally, in the past, when we get a drainage complaint, we go out, we make an appointment with the homeowner, we go out and talk to them, look at it. It may have just rained, it may have not rained in weeks, but it does require a lot of staff time to go out and actually make an appointment and talk to folks about what we already know is happening, but just to appease them and make them feel like there's some concern there that we'll do something with it. We pull the maps, we put them on a list for future action, and that future action probably isn't coming for a lot of folks for quite a while. The video inspection program, we actually put three cameras on three different vehicles and traveled all the city streets in one day and logged 110 times two miles of swales and actually have a video of them for that particular time. There's a picture of the camera, not very expensive, about $300 each, considering any time that saves us staff time, $20, $30 an hour, that doesn't take long to pay for a camera. When we go out and video it, we end up with a video of something like Google Street View, where we actually see where we've gone, we can see the picture of the house as we drive by, and anywhere we click on the map, we actually see that photo for that day of that position. We can advance it, reverse it, whatever we need to do to study the problem, see what's going on there. Our policy here at the city is that the water not stand for more than 72 hours. Unfortunately, with our summer rains every day, two days, three days, we often do not get a period where we've had no rain for 72 hours, so therefore, people swale, stay wet, weeks, summers, whatever it might be. And it still meets our policy of 72 hours. If the water's flowing and moving, 72 hours, the mosquito larvae will be washed down to the drain. But, so, our policy is 72 hours, no rain, that the water be dissipated. You can see here on this little graph, that's from the folks who chart our rainfall for us, that on August 6th, we had our third day with no rain after quite a few days of rains. Some years, we don't even get this opportunity where we have good, solid rain and then three days of no rain. It could, you know, drizzle here, drizzle there, or something kind of throws our survey off kilter, because we want it to be a good, hard rain across the city for a couple days, and then go out on the third day with no rain and video it. Here's some of the kind of pictures we got. You can see the lower left corner there, there's actually a swale where the grass has died from water sitting there too long, water along the road there in the cul-de-sac, and the top right corner has a picture of a swale who's got a muddy residue there, but the water has dried up. Different kinds of problems that we see. When we say flooding or drainage problems here in the city, we're not talking about roads overtop, you can't get through, anything like that. It's more nuisance water. We went through the entire survey except for the central part of Punta Gorda. We haven't done McGregor, Lemon, those streets, and we haven't done over by Boca Grande and that area yet. We videoed them, but we have not yet gone through the videos and logged all of them. We're still working on that. But here's what we came up with for problems. We have broken down to BSI, PGI, and BSM. Swale driveways are, we talked about whether or not we wanted swale driveways here in the city. We actually counted how many swale driveways we have, and we got almost 3,000 here in the city, swale driveways. So, an effort to replace those real quick just isn't going to happen. They're here, and they're really not going anywhere anytime soon. What we did find, though, that we have 1,535 of those swales have a muddy residue that's dried up, crusty, dirty, that folks do not like. Probably for two days, they had to walk across water or around water to get to their mailbox, but on the day we actually surveyed, those 1,535 were dried up on that third day. Only 110 of them actually had water in their driveway on that third day. Down to the sod issue, we had 142 where it looks like they couldn't mow, some other issue, maybe staining in the sod that probably doesn't meet our level of service. It's real close to meeting, not meeting our level of service, but we only actually saw 76 with standing water on the day of our survey. So, take the 76 and the 110, we've really got about 186 cases where they do not meet our stated level of service, but we do have almost 1,900 folks that are probably not happy with their drainage. What we're going to do with that, we're going to actually take each of those 176, 86 cases, whatever that was, and actually map them, survey them, try to figure out which ones are the highest priority, and make an attempt to get some repairs on them, starting, if we're getting 50 a year, we're going to take the 50 worst and make a repair to those. And then next year, we'll repeat the survey again and just continue through that. We wanted to bring this to you, make you aware of that, because we could have a potential of a lot of folks that, for years, they've been put on a list, but for years, they're not getting any results. So, this is our attempt to quantify it and make, reaffirm the direction that we're heading. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
What kind of measures are you taking to repair those properties?
Generally, it's regrading.
Regrading.
Scraping up the sod, taking down the dirt to the level it's supposed to be at and re-sodding them.
And how long does that take?
Well, it depends how big it is. Some of our worst problems might have very quick fixes. We did one on Macedonia a couple weeks ago. Took just hour and a half, two hours to fix, just open up one pipe that had been blocked. But others could be the whole section six, seven, eight houses to get the one that's the worst to drain. So, they all vary.
Tom?
Are we doing anything, Mark, with regard to new construction requiring culverts to be installed?
We have not had any recent requests for a swale driveway. They're kind of out of style. The level of houses that they're building, they're generally putting in. We talked about requiring it. We went and talked to the design board or someone like that I went and spoke to, and they had no objections to it. Probably on our list to make that a code requirement that they put in a pipe or culvert of some sorts.
Didn't we?
We talked about it here.
We had talked about it.
But we did not come back with an ordinance or anything yet.
That's right, we have not.
We've not had any cases where anybody's trying to put one in either.
Okay. We have found that most people are doing it, especially, the only ones that possibly can't is if there, if there's no way to get it in there and meet drainage requirements, but most of them, they're all, all new construction, they're pretty much all doing.
I think probably just to ensure that, we should incorporate that into our code. Yes, Kim?
I just have a question. Have you looked at the east side at all? I know they don't have a lot of, you know, drainage or culverts and that type of thing, but I know they do have drainage problems over there. And I've asked them if they've called and complained, because they'll, sometimes some of the yards will have water.
When you say east side, where are you speaking of?
I'm talking about over near Cooper Street and in that area.
Yes, that whole Cooper Street, Taylor, that whole triangle there is part of a future drainage project. The east side at the north end, Mary Street, MLK, those streets have a very nice drainage system in, and it was improved with our recent downtown flooding. But when you get south of Carmelita, that's part of our project area that's coming up. We did video it, we're going through it to use that, and we have a project coming up this year for that triangle there bounded by Carmelita, Taylor, Cooper, and the railroad tracks.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Nancy?
Question about the de-thatching. Did the expert that you've talked to have any recommendation that would give us thoughts on how we might expect that a homeowner, once we have spent the funds to replace the sod, regrade, and correct the problem, that then they might have an annual de-thatching or whatever that process might be, that could keep a level of service in their yard up? Because I know in some cases where you've actually looked at it, it's 10 lots to get to the drain, and that's going to be a lot. And when I look at some of the people that are complaining, are, their lot, it has a lot of thatch in it, and so, they're expecting us to fix it, when in fact, you know, it really is a cultural thing. And if we started to educate the homeowner about what they needed to do to maintain their swale, it might help reduce the overall problem.
And I guess maybe as a follow-up, maybe as a follow-up to that, what would be the cost of regular de-thatching? I mean, this is the, in the right-of-way that we're talking about, the swales, you know, as we work through the problem or the process, what kind of a cost are we looking at there?
I heard that number, but I apologize, I can't remember what the cost was.
But again, that might be another option.
Well, I'm not looking at it as a cost for us. I think, I look at it as, as a homeowner, it is your property. You technically own to the middle of the street, and so, it is part of what you have to do to maintain your yard, and it might be that the swale, you have to de-thatch in this, at least in the swale, in the right-of-way, let's say, to prevent problems, because I feel very badly for some of the residents when they contact us and they're experiencing the problem, but they're not, they may not be the causer. It's the person down the street. So, you go down the street and you try to tell them, you know, you're causing a problem, now you get into a discussion. And so, it becomes this culture. I've been struggling with, how do we come up with a culture, you know, some kind of a plan that helps us address this long-term?
Yes.
Is there any way we could do just one problem area with the de-thatching, like a pilot project, to see what the outcome would be, to see if it's, you know, you said it's really costly, or?
Well, we would have to regrade it to begin with.
Okay.
And then put it on a regular thatching program and then look at it.
Okay, because we would still need the new sod, no matter what.
Yes, they said they can't thatch through it because they can only go an inch or so.
Too late for that.
Correct.
I guess I just don't understand why it's our responsibility.
I'm there as well. I don't see it as our responsibility.
I'm with you, Kim. I've been struggling with, as a master gardener, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing, you know, I know what the problem is.
Right.
And, but we are the ones who have caused, I shouldn't say caused, we are the ones who have taken on that responsibility to address the problem by just having a program where we just go out and fix it. And people say, and so, we've been the ones who've been fixing it. So, now, it's, how do we transition that thinking?
Put the responsibility where it belongs.
Truly.
Well, I think we're talking about a couple of things. One is that, as you said, the culprit may not be that owner.
Correct.
So, I mean, so, you're saying to them, take care of the problem, but it's three or four lots, you know, to their east or west. The other thing is the, no, not only the thatching, but the, no, I lost it, whatever. Yes, Howard?
Now, am I hearing that you don't want us to go in there and retrofit swales anymore?
Yes.
Are you really ready for that?
I'm not, I, you know, I think that we need to discuss, how might we go about this? As I get these emails, and I understand what the problem is, I've actually had conversation with residents and said, let me tell you what the problem is. And I've actually had somebody who said, well, my stuff isn't draining, and the drain wasn't very far away, and it was in their own yard. And I said, if you would de-thatch your own yard, this would drain into that drain. But, so, I understand the issue. It's, we have a, we've created a program that is, it's a very nice program, and if we want to continue a program like this, it's going to cost us, if we were to go out and take care of every, right now, take care of every yard possible that Mike's identified, it would cost us $2.85 million to fix. And that's a, that's a big number.
Very big number.
And it's almost $300,000 just to take care of the bad, the really bad ones. So, and we're using ad valorem tax dollars to do that. So, it's a matter of, if this is a service that the residents want, and they want a service like this, then residents have to understand that there's a cost. And otherwise, there is something that residents can do to take this ownership of the response themselves and avoid us having to do it.
Okay, so, what, again, what I'm hearing just so far is having the homeowner take care of their thatching problems as they can. One of the other issues is that culverts do eliminate the problem. So, perhaps we might consider, any time that someone is redoing a driveway or something like that, part of our code would be, you put in a culvert. I mean, I don't think you can ask people to put one in, or if they keep saying they have the problem, and we can suggest, well, a culvert would be, would solve your problem for whatever that might cost. I'm sorry, Kim, you wanted to?
I was just going to say, why don't we make those recommendations? It seems to be the area, they have homeowners association, go to them and say, this is what's going to be required, you know, whether it be the thatching or that. And then, I agree with Nancy. If it's something else, then, and it is a service that those neighborhoods want, that we should add that to their, you know, I mean, we have a canal maintenance fee, maybe we have a, you know, yard maintenance fee.
I don't.
Yes, Howard?
Other communities, when I say other, many other communities in Florida have established what's called a stormwater utility fee. We brought that up about, when we talked about this issue about seven or eight years ago, and it went over as well as charging people for boat trailer parking. It went over like a lit balloon.
But you have a whole different council now.
Well, that's how other communities have dealt with this issue. They established what's called a stormwater utility fee. It's a non-ad valorem assessment. I mean, I can, a lot of communities have done it, and that's how they have dealt with this issue. I'm not saying we have to do that.
But we don't have, but we don't have the resources at this point in time to take care of all the problems, so maybe that is something that should be explored.
Even staff, I mean, come on.
Well, I know how much time it takes me personally, and I know how, I can totally respect the amount of time it takes Mark and the Public Works team to address these issues, and I can understand the frustration of the residents as well. And I can understand the frustration of the residents as well. I mean, I've seen cul-de-sacs that the water is just standing for, you know, weeks because the water can't go anywhere, but.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Would, I mean, I know you said we have 3,000 swale driveways. How, how much would culverts in those driveways affect the problem? Would it solve it, or not?
Well, the water's not going to disappear because we put the swale in there, but it'd be hidden under, in the pipe under the driveway. And that's usually enough that the folks aren't complaining.
So those, excuse me, those solutions are available to the homeowner, they can redo their driveway and they can put a culvert in, and that, indeed, the obvious problem or the visual problem, for the most part, is gone.
I think one of the things that we also need to be concerned about, when people want to put in a culvert, then they come through for a variance, a variance, a permission, permit, whatever, and now they're told that their driveway is too wide. It was their original driveway, and now we have restrictions on the width of the driveway. I think there needs to be an accommodation for those people whose current driveways, or whatever size they are, that they can then put the culverts in them. I know we hit that as, as an issue, you know, early on, many years ago.
That's a good point, that's something we dealt with.
I mean, if we want to, we could try letting the homeowners take care of it, thatch and all of that kind of stuff, and if we keep getting the problem and people really want to solve it, or if they come and say, we want you to offer that service, we want this stormwater manage, you know, drainage fee, then leave it to them?
Those, those that have installed the culverts would likely not subscribe to that program.
Right.
So I would recommend that we continue the effort that we are doing, intensify the education, codify that all new construction requires a culvert, and when we do go out to the problem areas, advise the homeowners of the solution that they could put a culvert in.
Might I add, though, the, changing a driveway from a swale driveway to a culvert is going to change that homeowner's situation. It's not going to change the problem in cul-de-sacs where the water's backed up. It's only going to make it livable for the people who have a particular home, so it's, they're two different issues.
And, you know, my, my perspective is that we have so many intelligent people in our community, retired engineers, surely you all can get together and find a solution. I mean, maybe put down the pipes longer, do something, I mean, this is.
But I will say that, you know, this is the same, I shouldn't say it's the same problem. It is like what we do, in some cases, we have two trash pickups a week. That's a nice thing. It costs our residents, they're willing to pay. It's, again, is this something, maybe it's a Howard, ask the community kind of thing for, are you, are you willing to pay more to have us remedy these situations when there are ways that you, you yourself can?
But maybe we didn't cause it.
Another Facebook question.
Well, you know, the other thing is, are you willing to have other kinds of plant material in the swale? Are you willing to have sunshine mimosa? Are you willing to have perennial peanut, are you willing to have some other things that may not cause thatch in the swale?
We talked about that last time, but then there's an inconsistency between what kind of grass you have in your yard, and people are particular about how they like their yard, and they're not going to want.
But if they're expecting us to pay for it, the city, all of the residents of the city, then we have to have specific requirements so that we're not using all of the resources for it. Otherwise, they can pay for it themselves.
Or if they want the city to do it, that we have a fee to come out to do, to do it that way instead. That this is a service that the city will provide for this particular fee. I mean, I think that there are other options that we can do to help offset some of the costs that.
Yeah, because I agree with Tom, you know, I don't have the problem in my cul-de-sac, so why should I pay the stormwater utility fee to help, you know, that's the way I would look at it.
Right.
Well, you've got a lot to think about, so, you're going to come back with recommendations, right, Mark?
Sure.
If we watch the film from the last time we talked about this, it'll be almost exactly what we talked about today.
I'd like for us to move on.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. I think we've beat it to death, and a future council can beat it again.
Again.
Oh.
Now we have our bicycle-friendly communities plan from Team Ponte Gorda and city staff. As they're getting set up, shall we take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Sure. They're ready.
Okay.
Five minutes. And I'm so glad you were there, and I'm going to want to hear from you later. Good, you're good. Like to call our meeting back to order? And we will now move on to our bicycle-friendly communities plan with Team Ponte Gorda and city staff. Before they begin, I did forward to our council members a couple of video links that Mitchell Austin had provided with regards to presentations or speakers with regard to bicycle-friendly walkable communities. And if you had a chance to watch them, I think that this will fit right in. Nancy?
That's great, and I'm eager to hear the results of the conference, the Walkable Communities Conference, I think it's very, very nicely linked. I'm Nancy Johnson, CEO of Team Ponte Gorda, and we want to present to you today a guide for applying to the League of American Bicycle, Bicycle Friendly Communities Program. In your council packets was the full plan, which is too long to present this morning. We will just review the highlights in this presentation and take your questions. What is a bicycle-friendly community? Well, you know, this is a beautiful community where people love to walk and ride their bikes, and it's certainly an attraction for people moving into the community to know that they can ride safely and have many opportunities. The League of American Bicycle Program provides a roadmap for developing such a community, and we've made many strides. It's based on five E's, which we'll review with you, and it's about building a bicycle cultures where citizens from eight to 80 can have safe places to ride their bikes or to, for recreation or transportation. There are only 16 Florida bicycle-friendly communities already. I just learned that our neighbors to the north, Venice, have a Silver Designation, not to make you jealous or anything, but just throw that out there. We've been working at this for quite a while, together, the city and Team Ponte Gorda and others. In 2011, the city made its initial application to the League of American Bicyclists and received honorable mention. This was a very labor-intensive process for urban design, and so in 2013, when the city appointed a bicycle and pedestrian coordinator, Mr. Austin, Team Ponte Gorda responded by forming a bicycle-friendly communities committee to support the work. Additionally, in 2015, our committee invited the League of American Bicyclists to send a representative for a site visit, and it was a ride around the town, city manager participated, and others. And many of the recommendations of that consultation are found in this plan. This is a highly collaborative effort. Team Ponte Gorda is the convener, but almost everybody who's any, anybody in the world of cycling comes to these meetings and participates, the police department, fire department, the school district, the health department, the riders' clubs. It's a very large, active, and highly participative committee. So this process is based on the five E's. We believe this can only be achieved through shared leadership. There are 90 questions to this application, many of them are essay questions, and many of them provide suggestions for what we might do. So we propose that we share the load. Engineering will have to be, City of Ponte Gorda will have to agree to be the lead. Obviously, citizens don't, don't do highways and don't do bike paths, cities do that, not citizens. The enforcement portion of it will be well-covered by the Ponte Gorda Police Department that already is way ahead in many of these areas, and we'll hear from them. Education, which is, will be shared by Team Ponte Gorda and the Ponte Gorda Police Department, will work together on public education. Evaluation and planning, all the partners will have to work together. It will take all of us contributing each our parts to take care of that part. Encouragement, which is what you know about in Ponte Gorda, pedal and play, wheels and wings, all of the bicycle loaner program, all the things that we already do, Team Ponte Gorda will be the lead. I'll now turn the podium over to Mitchell Austin, who will walk you through engineering.
Thank you, Nancy. For the record, Mitchell Austin, Urban Design, engineering is literally where the rubber meets the road on this. In order for the city to be a bicycle-friendly community, we really need to get the infrastructure right in order to make bicycling safe and convenient, not only for the bicyclists, but for all roadway users, but as transmotores alike. Our community has accomplished a lot in this area already. Back in 2007, we adopted an alternative transportation plan, which gave us a good, a good guide for bicycle facilities and sidewalk network. Out of this plan, with a lot of community desire and political will, we've accomplished great things with our Ponte Gorda pathways system. This system of multi-use recreational trails provides a solid foundation upon which to build a bicycle-friendly community. While the Ponte Gorda pathways are a good, solid foundation, they are capital-intensive and do take a long time to implement, as we're well aware. In order to achieve a truly safe interconnected bicycle network, we need to identify other bicycle infrastructure types that are, both can be rapidly accomplished and are cost-effective. To do this, staff must look into best practices from around the nation and really dig down into the details of our community in terms of roadway volumes, travel speeds, crash statistics, the characteristics of our existing roadway network, and even the land development patterns, to see how these best practices can be implemented in our community. So what are these bicycle infrastructure best practices? Well, the city has had a great deal of success with our Ponte Gorda pathways system, which is a network of multi-use paths. The system is great as it is now, but it is only partially complete. And we, we should continue to work towards the completion of that envisioned system. However, it must be emphasized that the pathways themselves are capital-intensive to build and to maintain. Fortunately, there are a lot of bicycle infrastructure types that are quite cost-effective. The first example of this is a bicycle boulevard. Now, bicycle boulevard takes an existing roadway that is low speed and low traffic volume, and designates it as a preferred bicycle route through signage and share lane markings. Some street conditions may also require traffic calming techniques to enhance the safety and attractiveness of those roadways to the bicycling public. A local example of this sample project would be Coronado and Akia St. in the Ponte Gorda Isles. This segment is approximately one mile and would connect, connects Bow Harbor Boulevard to West Marion Avenue. This project would include high-contrast sharrows and signage and cost approximately $5,000, so very cost-effective. Another example would be a separated bicycle lane. Separated bicycle lanes are separated from motor vehicle traffic via some form of physical separation or barrier to increase the perceived sense of security to the bicycle rider. However, unlike the more expensive multi-use paths, the separated bicycle lanes use the same roadway surface as was previously reserved for motor vehicles. A local example of this would be Elizabeth Street. Elizabeth Street is one of many north-south roadways that connect businesses and residents on the east side of US 41. On key segments of this roadway, there are no existing driveway connections, and the network of streets provides good motor vehicle access to all of the private properties. With this project, we would take those blocks and reserve them exclusively for bicycle and pedestrian traffic through the implementation of some landscaping, some bollards, and some roadway markings and signage. This project could be quite cost-effective, we'll get a quarter of a mile of bicycle network for 20, mere $27,000. Finally, I want to talk about bicycle lanes. This is a lane of traffic that is reserved for bicycles. The Florida Department of Transportation has recently reallocated some roadway space on the US 41 bridges for bicycle lanes. An example project of that for us in the city that we could implement is Nesbit Street. This section of roadway is approximately one-third of a mile in length, and currently the asphalt width is 36 feet for only two vehicular travel lanes, so it's quite wide. With a little bit of signage and some roadway markings and modification to the traffic signals to better to detect people riding bicycles, we could produce two-thirds of a mile of bicycle lanes for approximately $30,000. So again, a very cost-effective project. With that, I want to turn it over to our interim police chief, Louis, to discuss the enforcement component of being a bicycle-friendly community. Chief Louis?
Interim police chief, Tom Lewis, for the record. We are very fortunate in this community that we have a very low number of bicycle-related injuries or bicycle-related traffic crashes. So what you'll see in the, in the next coming slides is typically our enforcement is always paired with either education or some type of community involvement to get buy-in. Some of the accomplishments to date, you can see on our website, we have posted our traffic safety and enforcement plan, has a number of different bicycle safety-related resources, as well as some statistics. We do occasionally write some tickets, but that's not very common. From the enforcement, we obviously have our Ponte Gorda Police Department Bike Patrol, five members currently, we're looking to expand that. You may have seen the three-foot rule stickers on the back of our patrol cars, which is now going to all city vehicles. We also do bait bike operations. Typically, we have a number of stolen, or stolen bicycles in the city each year, so in response to that, we will have some targeted locations to stop that. And again, bicycle rodeos for our children, and of course, our active public media campaign. Moving forward from those accomplishments, you can see this is more of a, what they call the beep model, more of a holistic approach, it includes education, which also includes training for police officers on the different design options that the city may take, changes, and bicycle laws that may change. I mentioned officer training. We get about an hour to two hours annually where we'll actually bring in our bike patrol team leader, he teaches every single one of our patrol officers all of the different legislative changes that may have occurred, some recently occurred just this past year. And you'll also notice Trail Watch. Right now, it's in a conceptual phase, we're building some framework to essentially step away from neighborhood watch, as, only as it relates to Ponte Gorda pathways, and build a unique neighborhood that has specific neighborhood watch qualities to the Ponte Gorda pathways. And of course, our school resource officers and our patrol are always involved in Safe Rouse's School Program. Some examples of how we connect with our youth, we obviously have our interactive trailer, we play a lot of bicycle safety videos at our schools, and of course, our bike rodeo equipment. And we wanted to put this in here, other public safety successes as it relates to bicycles is our Ponte Gorda Fire Department Medic Program. What an awesome thing, where we can pair a police officer and a firefighter paramedic on a bicycle at very large events and, and bring those services to you quickly. And with that, I will turn it back over to Nancy Johnson.
Thank you, Chief Louis. We're proud to have a close working relationship with the PGPD, they already do a lot of the things that are in the application, so they're ahead of the curve. Public education is very important. Our goal is to develop a broad-based public education campaign for the community, and we've begun it already, and it's called Share the Lane. You're going to hear a lot more from Share the Lane. We got a Charlotte Community Foundation grant this past year to develop the website, which will be rolled out by the end of 2015, and the brand, and it will be a comprehensive site, there will be a clearinghouse for all things bicycle in the region. It will also include bicycle safety education information for all different levels of riders. The T-shirt that represents it is called The T-shirt that represents it is called, "I'm a spokesperson." We have a representative in the audience wearing one. Mr. Armstrong would stand up for a second there, the, our model.
Modeling.
We have, we brought a model today. Very good, thank you, Bob. And we have already conducted a traditional media campaign, but this year we're going to take it out. You'll be, as I said, the, the website will launch very shortly, certainly by the end of the year, it's almost done. And our media campaign this year will be multi-strategy. You'll start to see Share the Lane educational materials, public service announcements, e-resources on the website with links, and special events such as Bicycle Safety Month, and we'll use social media to reach all audiences. But this is really, the heart of it is the training. We plan to fund and deliver bicycle safety training to a very diverse group of target audiences in the city. It's important that we not only train cyclists, but that we train drivers, how to behave around cyclists. You know, this is Punta Gorda, Florida, and people come here from all over the country with different ideas about how to behave on the roads, and we need to make sure that people understand how to behave in this town, both motorists and cyclists and pedestrians, and we'll also use existing youth-serving organizations to deliver the same messages to young people. So, this is our plan for the year. All right, Mitchell, we'll take you through the fourth E, four out of five, which is evaluation.
Subject now near and dear to my heart. In order to become a bicycle-friendly community, we really need to do a good job of evaluation and planning. Our goal here should be to develop a comprehensive bicycle master plan that includes the efforts of all of our partners, both in the public sector and the private nonprofit sectors. To date, our community has accomplished a lot of, of things that we can be very proud of, from our existing collaboration with Team Punta Gorda, to our Complete Streets policy and our ongoing data collection efforts. The city has solid planning and evaluation tools already in place. Moving forward, we need to build on those accomplishments by updating the 2030 Alternative Transportation Plan into a true bicycle and pedestrian master plan with Cost Affordable Capital Improvements Program. Additionally, the city, along with its partners, needs to produce an annual report card, which will serve as a document to pro, to document our progress and address changing conditions as they occur in a timely manner. Now, I want to turn it over to Mr. Jerry Fallon to discuss the encouragement component of being a bicycle-friendly community. Mr. Fallon?
Thank you, Mitchell. Good morning, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Jerry Fallon, Team Punta Gorda. Encouragement is the fifth E in the League's template of becoming a bicycle-friendly community. We're providing lots of opportunities and support for safe bicycling as recreation and transportation. This will encourage and help foster culture, so citizens will be more inclined to use their bikes. With our gorgeous scenery and climate in Punta Gorda, encouraging people to ride their bikes is about the easiest job on the planet. So, by strengthening our bike culture, our citizens will be more encouraged to hop on their bikes to make a run to the post office or to the bank, visit a friend, attend a meeting, or meet somebody for lunch. A strong bike culture will allow parents of our children to feel good about sending their kids off to school on their bikes. Biking already has a strong presence in Punta Gorda's culture. We've hosted several major events, there's a list of them there. Team Punta Gorda's Pedal and Play, which attracted 635 riders last year, continues to be the city's premier cycling event. Peace River Riders Signature Event, Wheels and Wings had 336 riders last year in July. Their hamster wheel is scheduled again for January. And of course, the Free Loner Bicycle Program had 5,000 users last year. The light, the yellow bikes have a renewed fleet this year with 20 new bikes. The soon-to-be-installed Wayfinder Maps, along with the new bike racks, encourage visitors and residents to use our pathways and harbor walks. We certainly realize how lucky we are to live in this community. It's a community that has voted to improve infrastructure. We believe investing in infrastructure is a wise use of our tax dollars, and you have certainly delivered a long and impressive list of accomplishments. Thank you. Today, you can place another solid block in the foundation of Punta Gorda's future by supporting this proposal and pursue the League of Bicycle, the League's Bicycle Friendly Community status. Adopting a bicycle master plan will not only put us in good standing with the League of American Bicyclists, but will also be used by future city councils for their Complete Streets initiatives. But most importantly, when applied, will enhance Punta Gorda's livability and quality of life by increasing mobility for citizens of all ages and abilities. We ask that you allocate resources annually for bicycle infrastructure and aggressively fund its implementation. We are at a decision point, and I am not going to steal Howard's line here, but will simply ask, do you want to pursue the League of American Bicyclists Bicycle Friendly Community status?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very nice presentation.
Yes, very nice.
We've moved, yes.
Questions? We'd be glad to take any questions.
I have just a quick question. I want to know what this hamster wheel 200 is.
Oh, I can't answer that question. Can you answer that question?
It's not 200 miles.
Yes, it is.
Oh, what?
It's a, it's a loop.
These people are crazy.
Yeah.
Only you, Court.
Pardon me?
Only you, Court.
Your name?
My name's Court Naderfeld, and I wear a bunch of hats, so for this, I'll be Peace River Riders. The hamster wheel is an attempt by the Peace River Riders to bring in something called ultra-cycling. These are people who push themselves beyond any level of performance that you can imagine. Last year, we had 71 people who showed up to try to ride 200 miles in one day. We had five gentlemen and one woman who managed to do 200 miles.
Amazing.
Wow.
We had, I forget what the exact numbers were, but we had probably 15 or so that managed to do 100 miles, and we had a bunch of relatively new riders who came out to try to do 62, which is, in the bicycle world, is a metric century. And so, this year, we're looking to bring in about 140 people who are going to take an attempt at 200 miles, and you have no idea what that's like. I mean, I've done the century numerous times, and you get out 100 miles, and, you know, it's awful tempting to just stop and grab a cold one and...
I would think so.
...another six hours of riding.
I would think so.
That's what the hamster wheel is.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. We have accomplished so much, you know, in terms of being walkable, bicycle-friendly already, and obviously, this would take us a lot further. But what would the actual designation, I mean, we could do all of the things that you're asking, but why would we have to apply to the League of American Bicyclists?
We don't. I mean, for me, the primary goal is to be the bicycle-friendly community that our citizens want and need. It certainly would help to get the designation in terms of tourism, branding, you know, it's a, it's an honor that we would seek, but if the only outcome of this plan is that we have a fabulously bicycle-friendly community for our citizens, then we've won. So, I think that they, the goals are parallel. They're giving us a map, how to do it, and the things that they're telling us to do are good things, they're good for us. So, I, I think it's a win-win situation, even if we don't achieve it.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments?
I love this. I love this idea. I would even go further. I talked to Howard about it a little bit, and even encroaching into our right-of-ways and making bicycle lanes. We're in a retirement community, and I think for people to be safe, we need to have that separate lane. A lot of people ride on the pathways and the sidewalks, but people are walking there also, and so, when you get the real bicyclers and cyclists that are going faster, it's better for them to be on the road, and because otherwise, they have to just be slow, moseying along on the pathways. And with our older residents, they don't necessarily, you know, they're walking, they're biking, they don't know the rules, which side of the sidewalk should I be on? So, I would really like, I, I'm all for this and, and more.
Yes. Rachel?
I would agree, because we've been talking about this since I, the whole time I've been here in five years. It's like...